Dear students, welcome to I A C. Welcome to I A C Special Sessions. So my target to S S C C Z L C H C L I have done to pretty student too. So exam before it want special sessions can we attend any late. So definitely we get to undi. In the country, these special sessions will discuss just one of the pretty question coulda exam target just to undi. So this session one will manam first question choddam simplification question. Under root of three twenty four, under root of three twenty four value is eighteen because that is eighteen square. Under root of twelve twenty five, that is what amma thirty five. Under root of four forty one, that is what twenty one. So here eighteen into thirty five, eighteen into thirty five into one by twenty one. So twenty one manam seven into three right which kada? Seven table of the five times cancel jadham, three table of the six times cancel jadham. Six five is thirty and this entire value brackets la una twenty entire value thirty. Now thirty of one eighty percentage. Thirty of one eighty percentage manam, one eighty ama thirty of one eighty person manam. Thirty percentage of one eighty and go right which kada? Thirty percentage of one eighty and go right which kada? A percentage of B is equal to B person of A. Ten percent is eighteen, so thirty percent is what fifty four. So your answer is what option C. Second question coulda simplification question chodandi. So under root of forty nine, forty nine value anta ama seven. Seven twenty two plus seven, seven twenty nine. Cube root of seven twenty nine. So cube root of seven twenty nine, that is what ama nine, nine cube. Sixteen plus nine twenty five. Under root of twenty five, five. Five plus fifty nine, sixty four. Sixty four is which cube, four cube. So twenty one plus four, twenty five. Under root of twenty five, five. So your answer will be what option B. A person marks his goods X percent above the cost price and allows a discount of forty percentage on the mark blue price. If his profit is twenty percentage, what is the value of X? So here after giving a discount of, after giving a discount of forty percentage, after giving a discount of forty percentage, still he is making twenty percent profit. Forty percent discount each na padiki coulda twenty percent profit usundi. So forty percent discount ante remaining should be sixty percentage now. Sixty percentage of M P, sixty percentage of market price will be equal into one twenty percentage of C P because twenty percent profit is there. Sixty percentage of M P will be equal into one twenty percent of C P, then we need a hundred percent of M P, hundred percent of mark price. Sixty two times one twenty, hundred two times two hundred, so two hundred percentage. Then how to print hundred percent more because cost price is a hundred, then you have to print a hundred percent more. So your answer should be what? So value of X will be hundred, value of X will be hundred. Once again I am going to explain here. So forty percent discount is nothing but, so we are going to return sixty percentage of mark price. Discount is always calculated on mark price. Sixty percent of mark price, so that will be equal into one twenty percent of C P. So forty percent discount each na padiki coulda twenty percent profit usundi. One twenty percent of C P. Then how much above we are going to print? Anta above print chesam, first of all we need to find out hundred percent of M P, hundred percent of M P. Sixty, how many times ama sixty two times? Hundred two times is what ama two hundred? So two hundred percent of C P, then original C P is hundred, so we need to print a hundred percent more. X percent will be equal into hundred percentage therefore X will be equal into hundred. So your answer is none of these. Sachin borrowed a certain sum of money yet five percent for an animal and paid back it. So in two years, in two equal installments, so of five seven double three, what sum did he borrow? So this is compound interest installment cases, each installment he is paying seven five seven double three. Okasari me careful again chusthe manam aya answer chekaredu. Okasari me jarthu chudnama, okok installmenti ke five seven double three pay jasnadu, okok installmenti ke. Ande, runde installments la kalpi enta pay jasada choddam. Five seven double three, five seven double three, ande entosnandi fifty seven fifty seven one one four, double three double three oh double six, double three double three double six. Ande eleven thousand four hundred and sixty six pay jasada. Two installments la kalpi, ande interest to kalupukoni. Interest anta, rate of interest anta five percentage, rate of interest anta ama five percentage. Ande first year five percentage, second year remove the five percentage of five percentage ante point to five extra undunna, five point to five. Ando overall ka rate of interest anadi ten point to five percent undundi. In the country, first year five percent undundi, second year five percent undundi, mala five percent of five percent ante zero point to five undundi. Ando overall ka ento undu nama ten point to five undundi, ten point to five percent undundi. Ande ten point to five percent ante, ten point to five percent interest ante, amount should be one ten point to five na? Ande one ten percentage eleven thousand four hundred and sixty six aite, so one ten point to five percentage. Value will be eleven thousand four hundred and sixty six aite, manak hundred percent value kavali. Is a approximate a hundred times potun kada? Hundred times, hundred times of hundred ante ten thousand, ande par answer ten thousand kana ekku undali. So ten thousand kana ekku undali, so ten thousand kana ekku undali, ala una two one option entandi ten thousand six hundred and sixty. So your answer will be what? So option D will be the right answer. Mala formula jol velas not undu, awesome ledu. All of you clearandi? Question number five. Two persons A and B invested forty eight hundred and three thousand in a business. They divided seven point one four three percentage of the total profit equally, so equally. Equally undo, rest according to their investment. If A got six hundred rupees more than B, then what was the total profit in the business? Seven point one four three ama, seven point one four three ante how much fractionandi? One by fourteen fraction, one by fourteen fraction. Then investments are in the ratio, two zeros, two zeros get cancelled next to six eights or six five's. Their investments are in the ratio eight is to five. So investments are in the ratio eight is to five, eight is to five. All of you clearandi? First of all, they divide seven point one four three percentage equally and one by fourteen, total profit is fourteen. Total profit is fourteen, total profit of A and B is fourteen parts. Total profit is fourteen parts, out of fourteen parts, one part, one part, they are dividing equally. So one part equal ante emas nama, point five usundika da, kena point five usundi. Ipur fourteen parts lo, ok one part to, ok one part equala divide chesun taravata, enkene parts undundi, thirteen parts undundi. Ah thirteen parts ni yala share chesunar valu, vala investment adaraengas share chesunar, according to their investment. Investments ratio inni parts undi, thirteen parts undi. So investments ratio thirteen parts, mana remaining profit kuda thirteen eh? In the country fourteen parts lo, one part equala divide chesunapudu, remaining profit thirteen eh kada? Yes, ande each part will be equal into one, ande, so A cosar ki inni parts usunnama, eight parts usundi. So B cosar five parts usundi. Ande A's profit is what ama eight point five? B's profit is what five point five? So addigina question anta mka da? So what was the total profit in the business? Kachunama, ikada A ki B ki difference inni parts undama, three parts undi. So three parts ante entama, A got six hundred rupees more, A got how muchandi? Six hundred rupees more. If three parts is six hundred, then one part is two hundred na? If one part is two hundred, total how many parts ama fourteen parts na? So fourteen parts is nothing but two thousand eight hundred. One part will be, so two hundred, then fourteen parts will be two thousand eight hundred. So your answer is what two thousand eight hundred, two thousand eight hundred will be the right answer. Question number six. A man had to increase his speed by twenty five kilometer per hour to make for a delay of hundred minutes. If the distance is two fifty meters, what was his speed after the increase? He is not asking, here not asking the original speed, here they are asking increased speed, okay nama? So, so increase ain taravata, new speed adutunar, okay? So first of all, distance is how muchandi? Two fifty kilometers, two fifty kilometers. Original speed we don't know. Say for example, original speed is some X speed. Two fifty is the distance, X is the speed, original speed. So new distance coulda same eh, two fifty kilometers se undundi. Kana speed enta increase chesam ama, twenty five increase chesam. So a difference inni minutes ante, difference will be, so hundred minutes. Hundred minutes ante entama, one two by three hours, hundred minutes will be one two by three hours. Hundred minutes is nothing but one two by three hours. Purnchunama, X place lo, A value substitute chaste, manak one hour twenty, one hour, so forty minutes usundi, chodandi. So manak X na na man answer kada mala, X plus twenty five na na man answer, X plus twenty five na na man answer. X plus twenty five kabati, so X ki A value manam easyga man tuskochu, X value anadi. X plus twenty five will be the answer, X ni A value manam easyga tuskochu, fifty tiskunavu kundi. Seventy five na na option undi. Ande kana plain number to velal, eprenaa, option through velal, epur plain number to velal. X value fifty anukontunaru. In the country, X plus twenty, X plus twenty five seventy five kuda option undi kabati. Ipur fifty satisfied outu, me answer seventy five utundi. Chunama, five times potundi, kera fifty substitute chaste, so seventy five, seventy five any times ama? Seventy five, three times, two twenty five, remainder is twenty five, twenty five by seventy five and one by three. So five oncha three one by three tisaste, one two by three ne kada? Satisfied outu ne kada? Satisfied outu ne kabati, your answer will be what seventy five. They are not asking original speed, if they ask original speed, your answer is fifty, but they are asking new speed. They are asking after increase. So twenty five, manak tiskun fifty eh, kana twenty five increase chesuntha seventy five utundi. Yes, your answer is seventy five. So whenever they are asking these type of questions, so go through options. Option taravela epur kuda, edo first option inchie, so edo cheyden kado. So manam, chala, chala, so trickyga manam option select chiali. Indu seventy five select chesanante, so fifty anukunam, generalga, manam plain numbers ta velatam. Two fifty na na fifty table easyga comfortable ga divide abutundi. Fifty tiskunte, X plus twenty five and seventy five kuda option undi kabati, so comfortable ga tiskunavu. Okay nama? In the country sixty tiskunavu anukundi, so two fifty na na divisionable avadu. Eighty tiskunavu anukundi, two fifty na na divisionable avadu. Ninety tiskunavu anukundi, two fifty na na divisionable avadu. All of you clearandi? So ante sixty tiskoda ante, that meaning ante, so X plus twenty five. X plus twenty five sixty tiskunte, that meaning. So X plus twenty five eighty tiskunte, X plus twenty five ninety tiskunte, divisionable avadu kabati, so man fifty anukunavu villam. Question number seven. If an amount gets triple after eighty years, at a certain rate of interest, of simple interest. In how many years will it becomes one five six two five by four zero nine six times of its capital on compound interest with the same rate of interest? First of all, rate of interest me kankundam, in the country same rate of interest anadu kabati. So triple, a sum become triple. Triple odama ante, hundred become three hundred, then interest is two hundred. Two hundred rupees in how many years? Eight years. Two hundred rupees in eight years is nothing but, rate of interest will be, so twenty five percentage na? Yes. Sunama, here I don't know principle, I have as a hundred. Hundred become triple, hundred become triple. So triple is nothing but what ama? Three hundred. Amount is three hundred, amount is three hundred. Then amount is nothing but what? P plus I na, P plus I na. Then in the three hundred, hundred is the principle, then remain two hundred is the interest. Two hundred rupees in eight years, two hundred rupees interest in eight years. Then one year interest is what? Then one year interest is what? So two hundred by eight, because in simple interest every year interest is same. Then for rate of interest is twenty five, rate of interest is twenty five, rate of interest is twenty five. So now with the help of same rate of interest, so the given capital become one five six two five by four zero nine six times anta. Yes. Twenty five percent yala right which manam? One by four right which. So four is the principle, one is the interest. Yes or not? Then amount become what ama? Amount become what? Five parts? Amount become P plus Y, amount is nothing but P plus I. So P is what ama? Four parts. And five by four is equal to, so one five six two, one five six two five by four zero nine six, four zero nine six. So any years la utundi? Ipur four, by whole power four tiskunavu anukundi, whole power four tiskunavu anukundi. Five to the power four and ten tha six twenty five, kana manak one five six two five kavali. Ande, four years aite man answer kado, four years aite man answer kado. So okasari me chusthe, four years man answer kado. Next ama, next chodandi? Six years tiskunavu anukundi, five power six, yes. Five power six ante, one five six two five ekada? Five square ante twenty five kada? Twenty five cube ante one five six two five ekada? Yes. Next four power six, four square ante sixteen kada? Sixteen cube ante four zero nine six ekada? Yes. If you keep in the power of five by four six, yet is, yes it is satisfied, then your answer is what ama? Six years. Ande power la aim pettukunte, A value manam play chaste, manaki A value usundi. All of you clearandi? So your answer will be what ama? Six years. Question number eight. A boat takes five hours to go a certain distance in downstream and it takes nine hours to return the same distance. So find out the, so ratio of the speed of the boat to the speed of the current. Same distance annarandi, same distance, underline this word, distance is same. Distance is same, distance is nothing but what? Speed into time. Speed into time. Five hours which, which stream ama? Which, which direction? Down, downstream. Downstream speed is what? B plus C. Downstream is what? B plus C. How many hours ama? B plus C downstream speed into time, downstream time, five hours. Speed into time, distance. Distance is same, that is the reason I am going to equal. So here upstream, upstream is nothing but B minus C. B minus C, how many hours? Nine hours. Speed into time, speed into time, distance is equal distance, yes? Now we need to find out the ratio of B to C. So here five into B, five B, nine into B, nine B. Five B, nine B, difference is four B. Difference is four B, yes. Five into C, five C. So five C here, nine C. Minus nine C na, comes to this side, fourteen C na. So four B is equal to fourteen C. Then B by C is equal to, if you cancel in two table, so two sevens are, two twos are. So B is to C is equal seven is to two. So your answer will be what? Option B, yes. Next, question number nine. A and B can do a piece of work in six days, eight days respectively. If they started work together and work on it for two days, then find the time taken by B alone to complete the remaining work. Yes. A alone how many days ama? A alone how many days? Six days. So B alone how many days ama? Eight days. B alone how many days ama? Eight days. Six days or eight days? L C M is how muchandi? L C M is how much? Six to eight two, L C M twenty four, yes, twenty four. So twenty four in summa, A daily, A daily work is what ama? Four units. So B daily units is how muchama? Three units. A four units, B three units. Now, if they started together and worked for two days. They started together, A and B started for two days. A and B done two days work. So two days work is nothing but, one day work is seven units. So two days work is nothing but, how many units are completed? So fourteen units are completed, then who left the work? So then find that time taken by B alone complete the remaining work. So our target is to finish the remaining work, not total work. After completing fourteen units out of twenty four, remaining units are how many ama? Ten units. This ten done by whom? B alone, B alone. So B's one day work is what? Three units. So ten by three. So ten by three is nothing but three point three three na? So ten by three is nothing but three point three three days, yes. Your answer is what option A? Question number ten. Train A crosses train B while coming from opposite direction, so in forty eight seconds. And it also crosses a pole in fifty four seconds. The speed of train A and B are, so thirty six kilometer per hour and fifty four kilometer per hour respectively, then find the length of train B. So here, train A crosses train B. Okay nama? Train A crosses train B while coming from opposite direction in forty eight seconds, okay? And it also crosses a pole. Whenever train crosses a pole, distance is nothing but, length of the train itself will be the distance na? Yes. So train A length, train A length, so train A length is equal to distance. Distance is nothing but speed into time. Speed of A train. Speed of A train is what ama? Thirty six kilometer per hour. My thirty six kilometer per hour is nothing but ten meter per second na? Thirty six kilometer per hour is nothing but ten meter per second na? Speed is ten meter per second into time, how many seconds it will take? Fifty four seconds. Speed into time is nothing but distance. Fifty four into ten, five forty. Therefore, length of the train is five forty meters. Eprenaa kutu padikundi, ok trainu, ok electrical pole cross outu ni ante, traina length ente ite untundo, that will be equal into distance. Distance is nothing but speed into time, okay nama? So now we know train A length. When one train is crossing another train. When one train is crossing another train, so distance is nothing but what ama? So length of the train one plus, length of the train B, length of the train B. When one train is crossing another train, distance will be equal into train A length plus train B length. Distance is equal to speed into time, distance is equal to what ama? Speed into time. But here which is speed, relative speed, because both the trains are in motion. Whenever two objects are in motion, then you have to take, so relative speed, which direction, opposite direction. So opposite direction thirty six or fifty four, ma thirty six or fifty four. These are in kilometer per hour na, you have to convert them into, so meter per second, five by eighteen. This is speed na into time, time is how many seconds ama? Forty eight seconds. Now, look at here and all of you. So thirty six or fifty four, how much ama? Ninety na? Ninety. So ninety ante, okasari me chunama, nine table or two times cancel chesano? Okay nama, two table cancel chesano? So two any times ama twenty four times? So twenty four five is one twenty, one twenty ten times twelve hundred. Is equal twelve hundred. If you subtract five forty from twelve hundred, so remaining will be what ama? Six sixty meters, six sixty meters. So if you subtract five forty from, five forty from twelve hundred, remaining will be six sixty. So your answer is what? None of these. Question number eleven. A certain number is first increased by sixty percentage, then twenty four is added to it, after which it is decreases by twenty percentage. The sum of the original number and final number is one fifty six. Then find the original number. Sunama, original number ne first sixty percent increase chesam. Dan tarata twenty four add chesam. Dan tata twenty percent decrease chesam. Alaa chega, ochetu vane new number ni, original number ke add cheshta, one fifty six usundanta. Okasari me keeniga observe chednama, ilanti questions ochinapudu, through option taravelaali, option taravud deendhar velalali. Ipur sixty percent calculate chesun taravata, twenty four add cheshta, plain number ravalai, plain number ravalai. Ipur forty percent tiskunavu anukundi, original number ni. Sixty percent calculate cheshta, twenty four usundi. Twenty four ke twenty four add cheshta, forty, forty eight usundi, plain number usunda, radu. In the country, a forty eight lo inchie, mala twenty percent tisasa, decimals usai, ante radu. Fifty tiskunavu anukundi. Ipur twenty sixty percent fifty ante enta? Thirty, thirty. Ante eighty outundi, thirty increase just eighty outundi. Eighty ke twenty four add cheshta, one odd four outundi. One odd four lo oncha twenty percent tisasa, decimals la usundi. Manak decimals la raakududu. In the country, original number ni, new number ni add cheshta, plain number raval, one fifty six anadi, decimal number kada? It's a plain number. And fifty kuda kada. Sixty tiskunavu anukundi. So original number sixty tiskunte, din ko sixty percent add cheshta, ento usunnama? Thirty six usundi. Ande ninety six outundi. E ninety six ko twenty four add cheshta, one twenty outundi. Ipur one twenty me da twenty percent calculate cheshta, plain number usundi. Twenty percent ante enta? Twenty four kada? Twenty four subtract chesanta ama ninety six. Idi new number, this is what ama? New number. This is new number, this is a new number, and this is original number, this is what? Original number. Ipur sixty ke ninety six add cheshta, one fifty six usundu kada? Yes. Alaa chial tapa, me action kon sarkat chigudu. All of you clearandi? Very good. Coming to the next question. Eight years hence, ratio of ages of Deepak to that of Ayush is two is to one. And five years ago, the ratio of, the ratio of ages of nearest to that of Deepak is five is to seven. If Ayush is fourteen years younger than nearest, then find the sum of the percentages of nearest, Deepak and Ayush. Look at here and all of you. Eight years hence annadu. So Deepak to that of eight years hence, Deepak, eight years hence annadu plus eight tiskunavu. Ayush is equal, ratio is what ama? Ratio is what? Two is to one. If you go for multiplication, then what happen ama? So Deepak is equal to, so two into A, two A, two into eight sixteen. Sixteen lo oncha eight subtract chesama? Eight usundi. Ande two A plus eight. So Deepak will be two A plus eight, and the Deepak is will be two times of Ayush plus eight years. Now coming to next ratio, nearest. So nearest to that of Deepak. So five years ago annadu, five years ago, nearest. Five years ago annadu kabati, N minus five, nearest minus five. So divided by, next era ama? Nearest to Deepak, Deepak minus five. That will be equal into, so five is to seven. If you go for cross multiplication, so what happen ama? Seven into, seven into N seven N minus thirty five, that will be equal to five D minus twenty five, five D minus twenty five. So in place of D, just substitute this value ama? In place of D, just substitute this value, two A plus eight, two A plus eight. Here I am converting all values into A. Now, this thirty five, twenty five. So thirty five lo oncha twenty five subtract chesanta udama? Plus ten outundi. Ento utama? Plus ten outundi. Ande, e thirty five odal kehta, plus thirty five, plus thirty five lo oncha minus twenty five tisasta, plus ten. Ipur mitchunama? Seven N is equal to, seven N is equal to, what ama? Two A plus eighteen, two A plus eighteen, two A plus eighteen. Okay nama? Seven N is equal to what ama? So two A plus eighteen. So next, nexting came chadam kara manak? Ayush is fourteen years younger than nearest annadu. Ayush is fourteen years younger than nearest. Ande simple kela right which? Nearest will be equal into, nearest will be equal into, nearest will be equal into, so fourteen plus A right which kada? Okay nama, nearest is equal fourteen plus A right which kada? Yes. Chunama, ikada again me chusthe, nearest is equal to fourteen plus A. Ipur N plus of fourteen plus A, ande substitute cheshta manak emasnandi? Fourteen seven is ninety eight. N plus of fourteen plus A substitute chesnandi? Seven into A, seven A is equal two A plus eighteen, two A plus eighteen. Now look at hereandi? Seven A, two A, difference is five A, five A is equal to eighty, then A is equal sixteen. Seven A, five A, seven A, two A, difference is five A. If you subtract eighteen from ninety eight, that would be eighty. Yes, A is equal sixteen, A is equal sixteen. If A is equal sixteen, so N is equal what ama? N is equal what? Thirty, N is equal thirty. So if A is equal sixteen, two into sixteen, thirty two, thirty two plus eight, forty, D will be forty. So manak, three percent S tells now, so forty sixteen, fifty six, fifty six plus thirty, eighty six. Your answer will be what? Eighty six. Option B will be the right answer. Question number thirteen. A vessel contains milk and water in the ratio of two is to one. If twenty four liters of mixture is taken out and replaced with water, new ratio of milk and water becomes twenty two is to twenty three. Find initial quantity of mixture vessel contained. Initial quantity. Amma initial quantity or final quantity? Both are same. Quantity will not change. The proportion will change. Quantity will not change because here, two is to one, two is to one. Initially two is to one, and that answer should be a three multiple. But if you see the options, all are three multiples only. Here, after them, twenty four liters of mixture is taken out and replaced with water. Yes, twenty four liters were taken out and replaced with water na? Twenty four you are taking, again you are replacing with the twenty four liters of water. Total quantity won't change. Total quantity doesn't change. All of you clearandi? So total quantity change avadu kabati, so ala manam replay chesun taravata, ratio ala unama? Twenty two is to twenty three, and total how many parts? Forty five parts. And our answer should be a forty five multiple. Our answer should be a forty five multiple, yes. Either manak, first option chusthe, two is to one ante three parts, three multiples chusannia options unai. Kani twenty two is to twenty five, twenty three ante forty, forty five multiple avadu undi. Aval rununna, rununna anukundi, okada ni verify chesuntham. Verify chesuntha, satisfied outu, ade answer utundi. Satisfied kabati, runudhu verify chekaredu, direct ka answer aiputundi. All of you clearandi? Question number fourteen. A bag contains six black caps and nine red caps, five green caps. If two caps are drawn from the bank, one after another, one after another. This is very, very important point. One after another. And without replacement, this is also important, without replacement, not with replacement. Then find the probability, both the caps are green. First of all, how many caps are there? So six oh nine oh five, total twenty caps are there. So out of twenty, I am picking one cap, twenty C one. That should be a green cap, that should be a green cap. How many green caps are there? Five, five C one, five C one by twenty C one. So one after another, here I am not picking the two caps at a time, one after another, yes. I, so here I pick one cap, then next cap, without replacement, one already taken out, the remaining caps are nineteen, out of nineteen, again I am taking one cap. So out of five green, green caps, alade I took one. So I have to take another one, I have to take another one. So another one is what ama? So remaining is four green caps only, out of four we need to take only one, here without replacement. Chunama, replacement cheydedu, ok green cap tisisano? Next time, tisetai, enkun te, green caps four eh undai? Total nineteen eh undai, yes. Chunama, sorry, five fours is twenty, twenty twenty get cancelled, the answer should be one by nineteen. So your answer is what? One by nineteen. The average marks of twenty five students in a test were seventy five. It was later found that the marks of the one student had been wrongly recorded as, so ninety one instead of nineteen. What was the actual average? What is the correct average? What is the correct average? Whenever they are asking actual average, correct average, we go for T method. So take average here, so seventy five will be the average, take average. So ninety one instead of nineteen, take correct value as positive and take wrong value as negative. Nineteen, disco avasunde, ninety one tiskunavu. Wrongga tiskuna minus chiali, karatega tiskavasun flash chiali. By number of observations. Here number of students are how many ama? Twenty five. So difference, difference is how much ama? Twenty subtract chendi, ok one add chendi. About seventy two usundi, entosnama? Seventy two usundi. Minus seventy two, plus seventy two kado, minus seventy two. Okay nama? Minus seventy two. So twenty five table any times potunama? Twenty five two times, twenty five two times fifty, remainder will be twenty two. So twenty two ante manak point badikunte, two twenty usundi, yes or not? So twenty five, eight zah sama, two hundred, remainder will be twenty. Mala keep zero, ante twenty ante two hundred outuni, eight times potuni. And this is minus two point eight eight. Minus ushta subtract chiali, plus ushta add chiali. Ipur minus ochinu kabati, seventy five lo oncha, so seventy five lo oncha, two point eight eight ne subtract chiali. Okavela ikada ochet, output value, positive value ushta seventy five ke add chiali. So ipur ento utunam, man answer, two point eight eight subtract cheshte, so seventy two point one two undundi. In the country, eighty eight subtract cheshta, one two no to, man answer endavali. Alaa one two to enda option avate undi, alaa one two to enda option avate undi. So your answer will be what? Option C. Yes, here they given data interpretation, sixteen to eighteen. So here the below chart gives the distribution of expenditures in four different sections, are into food, entertainment and shopping. And percentage of income saved by him, so out of his total in, monthly income.